All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Cliff Smart, the president of Missouri State University. Welcome to our first ever student and family virtual town hall meeting. We've done three of these with our employees over the course of the summer. So we've, I think we know what works now and what doesn't. So looking forward to talking to you today and answering your questions. Here's how it's going to work. I'm going to give an overview of what's been happening over the last four or five months. We're going to survey you on several topics so that we have your thoughts that I'll be able to share with our Board of Governors when we meet tomorrow. And then I'll try to answer as many questions as I can. I'll talk for about the first 25 to 30 minutes or so, and then we'll have another 90 minutes to do questions. And during my remarks, I'll focus on our plans to return to campus in the fall and the precautions we have implemented in response to the pandemic. All right, so that you all get a sense and a feel for how to do the survey questions, we're going to go ahead and pop up the first one here. First two questions here. And so the first one is to help us understand the demographics of who is participating in the call. Please indicate who you are: first year student, in other words, a freshman starting here in a couple of weeks, a graduate student, any other category of student, a family member. And if you're not a student or a family member, then you would click the other box. That could be media, that could be employees, could be community members, et cetera. And then for students, if you would tell us if you are in-state student, an out-of-state student, or an international student, that'd be great. We'll give you about a minute to click answers to these first two questions, and then we will show you the results. All right, 15 seconds, we'll put the results up. So go ahead, and if you just joined the call, go ahead and answer these first two questions if you can. All right, Andrea, let's show everybody the results and see who's on the call today. So you guys can see the numbers there. Most of our, most of the students on the call are from Missouri. And we have a good number of first-year students on the call as well, along with family members. Thank you for that. As I mentioned at the end of the presentation, we'll take questions. We got, I think, about 100 in advance of the call. I know there'll be more today. We've got about 400 people on the call. Any questions we don't get answered, we will work through and try to get you that information. And we'll also share on the call today how you can figure out a lot of things as well. You're going to have the ability to see other people's questions. If you see a question that is one you're interested in knowing an answer to, you can have an opportunity to upvote that question. That way, you don't have to type it in yourself, and it will reduce the number of questions. All right, this next slide here shows you how to ask a question. Ryan, go ahead and pull that up. Very good. And so this same slide will be at the end of the presentation as well, so don't feel like this is your only chance to do that. One other thing before we move on, please do not use the question and answer function to comment on what you hear. It's really too hard for our folks that are going to be sorting and asking the questions to work through if you do that. And if you know others that would be interested in seeing this, or if you have to leave before it's done, we'll also be recording the session, and we will be posting it on the university website. The recording of this session will be captioned for those who might find that useful. Okay, so as you might imagine, at the university, we've been working on the coronavirus pandemic for what seems like an eternity. Our core executive team began meeting, began regular COVID-19 meetings on March 2nd, and we've been meeting ever since as a team, along, we've also been meeting with public health officials, our governmental leaders in the city and state, other university leaders to work on ways that we can keep our campus as safe as possible while continuing to educate students. On March 6th, the first case was reported in Missouri. On March 10, we imposed restrictions on all university travel. On March 13th, the Friday before spring break, we canceled classes when the first case of coronavirus was reported in Springfield. We then extended spring break by an additional week to allow our faculty to convert their seated classes to alternative delivery. And on March 30th, we started delivering all of our classes online or through some alternative delivery way for the remainder of the spring semester. We learned a lot during the spring. One of the most important things we learned is that not all classes can be moved online seamlessly. An example I like to use is when a nursing student is learning to intubate a patient. It's just much better to learn something like that in a classroom or in a lab than to try to learn it online. You know, other challenging classes to move online are science lab, mini agriculture courses, performance courses. And so we also know that not all of our students are able to learn as well online. Research indicates that freshmen in particular are less likely to be successful in all online classes than if they have seated classes. For these reasons, we wanted to have seated classes in the fall, and we want to get through the semester without having to move everything online like we did in the spring. You know, we didn't really know very much about the coronavirus in March, and we followed the national trend of essentially moving everything online. And while there's still a lot we don't know, I believe we have enough information to keep our campus community reasonably safe without moving all of our classes online this fall. And we're in good company. All the public universities in Missouri, all the community colleges in Missouri are offering some seated classes in the fall as we are. That does not mean that there won't come times in the semester that we might have to pivot. You know, I will personally be meeting with public health officials throughout the semester, weekly or more frequently to analyze campus data, community data, and to make decisions about how we move forward with our team. When making these decisions, we'll balance the educational needs of our students alongside the health and safety needs of our entire campus community. The decisions we make may involve certain classes or groups of classes moving online temporarily to address a spike in the virus. A building could close for several days for cleaning, for example. And it could involve even moving some classes online or to a hybrid model for the remainder of this semester. Even if we are forced to move some of our classes to online delivery at some point during the semester, our goal is to avoid a situation like we had in the spring where we move everything online. We have taken a number of steps to help reduce the spread of the virus in efforts to avoid having to do that. And so we're going to need everyone to follow university guidance if we're going to be successful. We're really all going to have to work through this challenging semester together. So first, students, faculty, and staff will be required to wear masks inside most buildings. Tomorrow, our Board of Governors will decide the specific rules on where masks must be worn on campus. I'd like to provide them data with your thoughts on masking, so I have a few questions here I would like to poll on this topic. All right, here we go. For students, where do you think it should be required to wear masks? So this is a pick-one answer. Only in academic buildings. In all buildings except residence halls, dining halls, and the recreation center. In all buildings, including residence halls, dining halls, and the foster rec center, except when you're in your own room or eating or drinking. And then the fourth one is, I don't want to wear a mask. And then the next masking question is, how about outdoor spaces? Should masks be required in all outdoor spaces on campus? Yes or no? So take about 30 seconds and go ahead and respond to those questions. Again, we're asking that only students answer these questions so that we can report that student thoughts to our Board of Governors tomorrow. We'll show you the results here in about 15 seconds. See where you fit on this spectrum. Five seconds. All right, Andrea, what do we have? Okay, so top answer on question number one, in all buildings, except when in your own rooms or when eating or drinking. And then on, for outside, the majority is no. Those are similar answers to what our employees gave yesterday, and I think those are likely to be the parameters that the board adopts formally tomorrow. Let me briefly touch base. There were five people that say, I refuse to wear a mask. And so let me just honestly put this out on the table. You've got to either get over that and decide that you're going to wear masks and you're going to come back to campus, or probably it's better that you take your classes online and not be on campus, because I'm confident that we are going to have a masking requirement for most, if not all, of our buildings on campus. With certainty, it will be required to wear a mask in classes with very few exceptions. And so essentially, you won't be allowed to attend class if you're not wearing a mask. And so don't want there to be any confusion about that, and so you can decide accordingly what's best for you. All right, in addition to masking requirements, we have implemented social distancing protocols. You'll see stickers on the floors in offices, like outside the bursar's office or financial aid, instructing you to stay six feet away from other people. You'll see signs posted indicating where masking is required. You'll also notice that classrooms will not be as full as they typically are, and we're going to encourage you to stay six feet away from people outside of classrooms as well. We've also changed the way many of our classes are being delivered. We have more online and hybrid classes than we typically do. We still have a lot of seated classes, particularly for our freshmen, but you will see a lot of classes that meet once a week in person instead of two or three times. And the other times will either be on Zoom or will be online. This helps us socially distance students and limit person-to-person interaction, particularly with our at-risk faculty and staff members. We'll also be cleaning high-touch surfaces on campus more frequently. Classrooms will be cleaned at least three times a day. We'll also use commercial-grade disinfectants. We have put hand sanitizer stations in every building. You know, many of our large student events on campus have been modified for the fall to create smaller events where people can spread out. We hope these events will still be enjoyable, and I would encourage you to continue to be active, to go to events, to meet people. Greek life, student organizations, intramural sports, and things like that are still going to occur. And this is going to be a real college experience for folks in the fall, although a modified one. We have created a COVID-19 response team to work with all of our students, faculty, and staff if they test positive for COVID or if they need to quarantine. They will stay in regular communication with impacted students to be sure they have everything they need, help them to decide whether and how to quarantine, receive medical treatment if necessary, and answer questions. This team is comprised primarily of public health and healthcare professionals. Finally, we've created a COVID Information Center that provides all sorts of information about university operations during the pandemic. I would encourage each of you to take the time to look through the information found in the webpage. So looking at this slide, there are three boxes there right in the middle of the page. The box on the left is a link to information about confirmed cases on campus. No secrets, we're going to track by week and by day number of cases. There'll be a graph that'll begin operating next Monday to make this easier to look at, so you can always find out how many people on campus have tested positive for the last week or the last 14 days. I don't think very many universities are doing that, but it's important to us that we be completely transparent as we go through this fall semester. The box on the far right is a link to information about how to notify the COVID response team if you have been exposed to the virus. And so, you know, potentially, if you went to an urgent care center, if you got tested while you were home, we wouldn't have that information. It would be your obligation to tell us that you have a positive test result. And so that's an easy way to get to that. And then in the middle is the link to our Return to Campus Guide. So here's what the Return to Campus Guide looks like. The guide includes answers to many questions such as, what do you do if you have COVID symptoms? What do you do if you test positive? What do you do if you've been told to quarantine or have had close contact with someone who has COVID? When can you return to campus if you tested COVID or were exposed to someone who tested COVID? Another important feature of the website is the Frequently Asked Questions link. You can find the FAQs in several places. If you scroll down the main COVID webpage, we've circled them here for your convenience. You can also find all of the FAQs combined together using a link on the left-hand side of the page. The FAQs take the general guidance in the Return to Campus Guide and flesh it out with more practical examples. So in conclusion, while campus will be different this fall, we've all worked for the last five months to reinvent the way we do things, to provide an engaging campus experience, and continue to provide the good education that we always have. The Campus Guide was updated this week, and so if you looked at it two or three weeks ago, let me encourage you to go back and look at it again. We've really fleshed it out. There's a lot more detail. There's a lot more information about how things are going to operate. Okay. One of the issues we've been working through is having space available for students on campus to isolate or quarantine if they test positive for COVID-19 or have been exposed to someone who has. And so with that in mind, I'd like to hear from you again about what your plans would be in this situation. So I've got a couple more survey questions we want you to weigh in on. Here's the first one. For students, if you tested positive for COVID-19 at some point during the semester, what actions would you take with regard to the required 14-day quarantine? So five different choices. The first two are if you live on campus. I live in a residence hall, and I would remain on campus and quarantine in the designated residence halls identified by the university. So for example, we're keeping one whole residence hall vacant this fall so that we can use it to quarantine folks. Second option, I live in a residence hall, and I would return home. Third option, third, fourth, and fifth, or I live off-campus, and I would quarantine in my house apartment or Greek house. Fourth answer, I live off-campus, and I would quarantine in a location reserved by the university. Fifth, I live off-campus, and I would likely return home. So you may not have thought about this in detail, but give us at least your first impression. If you tested positive for COVID-19, what would you do in that circumstance? We'll take about 20 seconds and ask you to check one of those blocks. All right, five seconds. Okay, Andrea, let's show information there. Good. That's helpful for planning purposes. So again, thank you for participating in that survey. We're also interested in learning, what would your plans be if all of your classes had to move online or to some form of alternative delivery for a couple of weeks, temporarily or even for the remainder of the semester? And so again, if at some point during the semester the university is forced to pivot to alternative teaching methods, either temporarily or for the entire semester, what action would you take? So if you live in a residence hall, tell us if you would stay on campus or would move home. And if you live off-campus, tell us if you would stay in your Springfield apartment or living situation, or whether you would move home. It'll take about 15 seconds for that. Again, these are for our planning purposes as we, you know, try to figure out and manage residence life for the semester, given the uncertainty of the virus. All right, five seconds here, and then Andrea will put the results up. Good, thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Very good. That'll be helpful. Two more questions. First, I'm interested in gathering feedback on your overall feelings about coming to campus during the pandemic. So for students, how do you feel about coming to campus for the fall semester, given the current circumstances? And so this is for all students, whether you're on campus or off. Check, I don't have any concerns. I have some concerns. I have significant concerns, but I want the on-campus experience, even though it'll be different. Fourth block, I do not want to come to campus, but I don't have a choice since I need to complete courses that are only offered in a seated format. You know, for example, you're a musical theater student. I'm strongly considering taking a semester off, so that would be the block of, I really don't think I'm coming back this semester. Again, take about 15 seconds and check that block. All right, Andrea, five seconds, and we'll show the results here. All right, thank you for that. And then finally, last question. And we've been working to develop an online option for freshmen. This would allow a new student to enroll in all online classes for the fall. And so this is for incoming freshmen only. If the current residency restrictions were suspended, and first-year students were allowed to take all courses online, we'd have a smaller selection. But would you take advantage of this option? So you're in St. Louis, you're in Jeff City, you're in Springdale, Arkansas. In all those situations, typically, you would not have the option to take online classes as a freshman. You'd have to come on campus to do that. So this question is, if we waived that requirement, and you, would you, would you take that option and take online classes for the fall and then come to campus in the spring? So freshman only, go ahead and take a few minutes, take a few seconds, and give us your thoughts. Again, this will help us with planning purposes for the fall. All right, five seconds here, and Andrea will show us the results. Okay, so there is, there's a significant group on this call interested in that. Let me tell you that you should look on Friday on our webpage at the freshman admissions page, and I anticipate that option will become available. Again, check on Friday at the webpage, and you will learn how you can follow up to see if that option is available for you. All right, that's the end of my presentation, and that's and as promised, I stayed under 30 minutes. We're going to, we're going to put up the other folks that are on the panel here today so that you can know who they are. I'm going to ask that they turn their cameras on. And let me introduce who you are looking at here. Suzanne Shaw is our Vice President for Marketing and Communication. She'll be asking questions that you sent in. David Hall is our Director of Safety and Transportation. He is leading our COVID-19 planning efforts. Matt Morris is our Vice President of Administration, in charge of most space and cleaning rules. Rachel Dockery is our Legal Counsel. Michelle Smith is Dean of Students. Gary Stewart's in charge of Residence Life. Dr. David Maggi is our Director of the Major's Health and Wellness Center, and is also a physician. Prior Douglas is a graduate student and the Student Representative to the Board of Governors, so he'll be in the conversations tomorrow as final decisions are made. Frank Einhellig is our Chief Academic Officer and Provost. Dr. Cisco is our Vice President of Student Affairs. Tara Orr is your Student Government Association President. And then the other folks on the call are facilitating questions and helping manage the technology this morning. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne. She will feed me questions. And then if I need help on answering, I'll feed them out to the folks that are on this panel. Suzanne, let's get started.
Good morning. So our number one question, looking at our upvotes, is, are we coming back after Thanksgiving break for finals? Or are we going to stay home and be safer?
Yeah, great question. You guys obviously know that there are schools out there, particularly a lot of private schools that have made that choice. Notre Dame, for example, has made that choice. The Dukes made that choice. You know, so many of our students, about 84% of our students, come from Missouri, and so frequently, they go home, either, you know, on weekends. Typically, our students are not on campus all the way from the beginning of school through Thanksgiving. They may go home to their own homes. They may go to friends' homes. They may go up to University of Missouri because something fun is happening there. And so we didn't think it was necessarily, it would be necessarily helpful to shorten the semester and just end it before Thanksgiving. And so right now, we're planning to continue on our regular academic calendar with this caveat. The virus is in control. And so if we get to a point where it makes sense that we end the semester that Friday before Thanksgiving week, we will do that. That is one of our contingency plans. And then we would finish the semester the next week and a half online and do tests remotely. So that is a contingency plan, but as we sit here today, that's not our plan. And frankly, we don't think we need to make that decision today. There's been so much change in the last six, eight weeks. It's really hard to make decisions for December, three and a half months before we get there. But no, we are tracking this every day, and if the health and safety of the university requires us to do that, we won't hesitate to do it.
Thank you. What happens when someone in one of my seated classes tests positive for COVID-19? Will I need to self-quarantine for two weeks?
David, I'm going to kick that question to you and talk about how we're going to track all that down.
Yeah, that's a good question. We certainly get that a lot. So what we do is, we've partnered with the Springfield-Green County Health Department and worked closely with them. So as someone tests positive, then what they would do is So as someone tests positive, then what they would do is they would be placed in isolation in order to separate them from others. As part of that, we also look at any others that would have had close contact with that individual, and then we reach out to those that have had close contact and then advise them or work with them in order to get them in quarantine. What close contact is defined as by the Health Department and the CDC is being within six feet for a period of 15 minutes or more. So if you're within a seated class and you happen to be within six feet of the others, then it would require you going into a quarantine and you would be notified because you've had that close contact. However, if you're a student that's just in the class and you're across the room, then, you know, we would not do that. And really, on rare occasions, would it be a case to where we would require multiple ones? The majority or all the class to be put in quarantine, they would typically be very small lab classes where they're working closely together in some of those very unique situations. But what we're doing is we're working closely with the Health Department and they're giving us the guidance on who needs to be in quarantine and who would need to be in isolation.
Good, thank you, David.
Okay. We understand that SOAR transitioned to a virtual format because SOAR leaders tested positive. Were any students who attended SOAR exposed? And how do you plan to prepare for hundreds of thousands of students back on campus at one time, given that situation?
Yeah, don't have any reason to believe that any student who was registering for school was exposed as a result of that. That's based in part upon when, when the positive tests came up. And so the persons would not have likely been giving off the virus. Also, were the fact that everybody was wearing a mask. Really highlighted the importance of everybody wearing a mask as we went through SOAR. And so ultimately, it's our, we have, we have no reason to believe that any student that registered that week was exposed. What was the second part of the question, Suzanne?
How do you plan to keep students safe, hundreds of thousands of students safe?
Yeah, so we won't have hundreds of thousands of students on campus. We'll have, you know, at any given time, there, there might very well be 5,000 to 10,000 students on campus, you know, one of the... So all the strategies we've talked about, you know, spreading classes out, reducing the size of classes, having classes meet once a week instead of three times a week, moving about a third of the classes online, moving most 200-level and above classes to a hybrid model, so they only meet once a week, spreading classes out throughout the day, all having, you know, cleaning classes multiple times throughout the day, having hand sanitizer available everywhere, masking inside buildings. All of those things we think are the appropriate safety precautions that we need to take to get through the semester safely.
Okay. With many Missouri cities being identified as red zones for the virus and many students coming from those areas, how do, how are we prepared for that? Will there be testing for these students or quarantining as they come on campus before starting classes?
Yeah, so, so, you know, it appears that, you know, the virus is, has gotten to a point where it is in a lot of places across our state and throughout the Midwest and Mid-South where most of our students come from. And so we're doing some testing when students come back. So for example, as all student athletes have come back, they've been tested. As our residents' life staff came back, they've been tested. We're going to do random testing of other groups of students as well, particularly students that are in the performing arts, music, choir, band. We'll, we'll have some random testing there. We'll also do random, random testing in the residence halls throughout the year, beginning in September. We'll be tracking, there, there are ways that the city is gonna help us in terms of tracking sewage, that we're gonna be able to see if, if the potential for spiking is there. We have tremendously good testing capability. We've been able to get one-day turnaround for our res life and student athlete testing that we've done. That helps us catch it early and quarantine or isolate people connected there. And sometime this fall, we anticipate that the, the oral testing, where you can get results back a lot quicker and a lot, a lot less expensively will come into play, and then we can do it more broadly. David Hall, anything you would add in terms of the testing piece?
No, I think you covered it nicely. I think for what people really need to understand is our philosophy is we're testing those high risks as they're coming on campus, and then we're continuing to do random testing throughout the semester so we can quickly identify and be able to, you know, provide additional testing in those groups to where that we may see an increase or an elevated, and then quickly be able to isolate or quarantine that.
And I would add that any, any student that has traveled internationally in the 14 days before they come to the campus will be tested as well. Now, many of our international students stayed in Springfield all summer, and so there's no difference between them than, than a student who just lives in Springfield all the time. But, but whether it was a domestic student that, that traveled here or an international student that, that traveled here, if they traveled internationally because they will have gone through airports and been on planes for a long period of time, we will test all of those students before they come to campus as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm going to, I've seen a lot of different questions that all go back to refunds. So I'll start with the biggest or the broadest refund question. If the university transitioned to online again, as we did in the spring, all online for the remainder of the semester, would refunds be given for things like parking and student fees and residence halls, housing fees? How would that be handled?
Yeah, so our, the easiest piece of that is parking because our current parking allows a refund at any point. So for any reason, if you decide, you know, you purchase a parking pass and two weeks from now, you decide you don't need your parking pass, you can go to this, go to the traffic office and get your money back. So that, that's always true. You know, in the spring, when we transitioned everyone home, we thought it was important to keep our residence halls open for the full semester for folks that needed to be there, either, either because they had no safe home to go back to, or they didn't have online capability at their home, or for any other reason that they wanted to stay. So our goal would be to keep our residence halls open the entire semester for our students. We also, however, refunded a pro-rata share of dining and meal plans for those that decided to go home. We were able to pay for that with some of the federal money from one of the CARES Acts, and it would be our goal, at least depending upon when, when we move things online, to do the same thing now. And so, you know, if, if things get exponentially worse than we anticipate and most classes move online at the end of September, we would certainly look to, to make refunds in those areas if at all, if at all possible. On the other hand, if we're just transitioning over for the two weeks in December after Thanksgiving, unlikely that in that kind of scenario, we would do refunds. So a part of it depends upon when, when it comes about. A part of it depends upon, do the services remain open or closed? You know, it's certainly conceivable that the state of Missouri or the city of Springfield can issue an order that would require things to be closed. That would be a factor that goes in. But our history last year is treating people fairly, and our goal would be to do that again, to always do that again. Now, the other piece of that is sometimes we get questions about, do we get tuition refunds? And the answer to that is almost always going to be no, as long as the class continues because you get the college credit and you continue on in your, you know, in your progress towards graduation. And so it's really that college credit that you are paying. And so very unlikely that we would do tuition refunds unless a class has to be discontinued for some reason. And almost every university all across America has had the same analysis of the tuition piece. The, the housing and dining refunds have been a mix, if you survey other universities. But, but our goal would be to treat our students fairly, and if you're not being able to take advantage of housing or dining, you should expect to receive some kind of refund as a result.
Okay. Thank you. Back to, still on the money issue. I heard that you're charging students more for online classes that were originally seated classes. How do you justify this if a student wanted to be in a seated class?
So our, our fee schedule approved by the board for at least the last 10 years has a different charge for online classes. And so I think, I think this year it is $299 or something very close to that. And that is true whether you're an in-state or out-of-state student. It is one rate, essentially because there's a convenience factor there that it can be taken from anywhere. And secondly, historically, it has been more expensive for us to teach online classes than, than to teach seated classes. Now, as we get into this new environment, our commitment is to reevaluate that pricing structure going forward because it makes less sense if you're transitioning between seated and, and blended and internet during the same semester and they're going back and forth. And the other piece of the, of the fee structure is if you're taking online courses, you're saving about $500 in fees. And so you're not paying those fees, for example, to the Foster Rec Center, to the Recreation Fields, and a variety of other kind of fees. And so, so there's a, there's a ying and a yang to that. There's some advantage and some disadvantage, but our commitment is over the course of this year, if this is the new norm, we're, we're gonna, our board is gonna take a look at, at our undergraduate fees and evaluate a different structure, given the change that has occurred.
Okay, thank you. Will students be penalized for staying home if they're showing signs of COVID-19 symptoms?
So the goal is for you not to be penalized. So if you test positive and you have to quar, and you have to isolate, if you are directed, as David talked earlier, because you were sitting next to someone in a class who tests positive, or your roommate tests positive and you have to quarantine. We've sent, we've been interacting with all of our faculty and encouraging flexibility in terms of attendance policies, in terms of making sure there are ways students can continue to keep up with work. And so our goal is for you not to be penalized at all. If you struggle with that, if you think you're not be treated, not being treated fairly by a faculty member, then you should reach out to the provost office. Dr. Chris Craig is our deputy provost, and he coordinates interaction with all faculty on these kinds of issues. And so that would be the place you could go. You could always send me an email if I'm easier to remember, and I would forward it to Dr. Craig for him to work on that. And so our goal is, and I believe our faculty have that mindset, the great majority of our faculty in the spring had that mindset as we transitioned to, to online classes. And, and, you know, as we have seen over the course of this summer with students that have tested positive, most of them have been asymptomatic. Those that have had symptoms have had mild symptoms, and so they've been able to continue in their studies. And so, so we would work hard to make sure while you're in quarantine or isolation, you're able to continue with your studies if your health allows you to do so. If your health doesn't allow you to do so, then we would work through that scenario as well. And then, of course, there's always the option to take an incomplete on a class and, and finish the work up later so, so that it's not lost.
So Cliff, would it be the responsibility of the student to reach out to their faculty members to let them, to inform them of their situation and make these arrangements?
Yes. The faculty member is not gonna necessarily know that you're positive or that you're in quarantine. So you're gonna have to send an email. We still work on the, you know, the old technology of email is our basic communication with students and faculty and between students and faculty. And so you would wanna let your teacher know, hey, I've been placed in quarantine. I'm not gonna be in class for the next two weeks. How do I keep up?
Okay. And on the flip side, what happens if my instructor, my faculty member tests positive?
So he or she will then not be in a seated class if, obviously. If it's an online class or a blended class, depending upon their symptoms, they may be able to continue the class or not. Maybe possible that there's a substitute that's able to continue the class. It may be that the class suspends for a week or two and then starts back up. So we're gonna be handling those on a, on a case-by-case basis. Dr. Einhellig, would you like to weigh in on that question as well?
I think you've covered it in all the bases. It is very case-by-case. There will be times when there is no way to get a substitute. I mean, these things get very specialized in the classes and you can't just have anyone step in. So it's depending on how sick the faculty member is, whether they can go ahead and work from home because they're not so sick, but, and how long that is prolonged in the life. So we're just gonna have to work one at a time on those instances.
Thank you. We're going to go in a different direction. After reading the hashtag #BlackAtMostDay, how do you plan to put emphasis on cultural competency? And how will you and the institution advocate for underrepresented, underrepresented, upper rep, underrepresented students?
Yeah, so Dr. Smith, I'm gonna call on you here in a minute, but as our Dean of Students to address this, this topic as well. No, the first thing I would tell you is we're taking that seriously. I've read that hashtag, the responses to that hashtag. Our administrative team has as well. Many of our faculty has as well. And so we've put together a whole list of actions that we'll continue to build on. And a part of that is what we are doing for all of our faculty, a Thursday before classes begin, a welcome back, where our focus is going to be on this very topic. And Dr. Lyle Foster, who's a professor, professor in sociology, Wes Pratt, who is my Chief Diversity Officer, are going to be doing a presentation and talking about their experiences and how as faculty and staff, we can create that inclusive environment on campus and specifically in the classroom to do better on this. Dr. Smith, weigh in for us here from the Dean of Students perspective.
Sure. Thank you, President Smart. As we work through our students coming back to campus, we wanna make sure that our students have a sense of belonging on campus. That is our returning students and also our new students. And as President Smart stated, we are putting a number of activities and actions in place. We're gonna be doing training with our faculty and staff. We're gonna hold trainings with our student leaders that will then trickle down to, of course, all of our students across campus. And we will, on a consistent basis, have workshops, trainings, talks, activities through our multicultural services area. And we will continue to work with our students so that they have a voice in the work that we do. We want them to be engaged, and we wanna make sure that we are addressing that particular hashtag as well as any other instances that are happening across our country, in our nation, and in Springfield. So that is the work that we will continue to do.
Tara, do you wanna weigh in on, on this topic?
Yeah, I just kind of echo off of what Dr. Smith said. We are working our hardest to try to advocate for all students and make sure all students feel at home at Missouri State. And it is gonna be different, but we rely on you and your voices and your opinions. And we rely on your communication with us to be able to advocate for you. Because I sometimes don't fully see the issues. And if it isn't for your voices and things that you voice on campus, then we can't really help to our full advantage. But just making sure you are coming to us with any issues you have or any concerns you have in response to all of that. Because we are here for you. That's why we are in these jobs and positions.
Okay, thank you. What, back to classrooms and COVID. What can we do if people are not wearing masks in the classroom? And is there any disciplinary actions for those who refuse to wear them?
Yeah, so, so students and faculty members will be wearing masks in class. That, that's required. Ultimately, ultimately, any student who refuses on the first day to wear a mask in class will be dropped from the class and escorted from the room. And so know that our teachers will either be wearing a mask and/or a face shield to protect themselves and you as well. In the larger classrooms, they'll be mic'd to make sure that, that folks can still hear them talk as they lead discussion and lecture. And ultimately, if, if either students or employees violated that rule, they would go through kind of our regular campus disciplinary process. And so, you know, we have a code of student conduct and this would be a conduct violation. We, this would be a disciplinary action for employees as well. And so after, you know, one, two or three warnings, if we had an employee that, that refused to follow a governing policy of the university, they would receive discipline up to and including being terminated from the university. We're gonna take masking very seriously and we're gonna expect people to wear them.
So what if a student has a health?
Dr. Cisco, would you want to weigh in on that as well?
I did. Thank you, President Smart. On a positive note, I just wanted to add to that that if a student should forget their mask or lose their mask, SGA is gonna work with other student leaders to have tabling on campus to hand out free masks. And each of the deans in the academic colleges will have masks available. So there shouldn't be any problem if someone loses, you know, forgets their mask. We'll be able to get those out as well, so.
And we're gonna be promoting that through, but I've got an Instagram that'll, that'll come out shortly that, that will be released that Boomer and I will be promoting wearing masks. Lots of our student groups will be promoting wearing masks. There'll be masks given out first, first week of campus. We've got like 70,000 masks that, that to distribute. Again, they're gonna, we're gonna make this easy for people to pick up a mask. And, you know, sometimes they fall off a backpack and you don't have one when you go in. We're gonna make this easy and make them available and, but, but it is going to be a requirement.
So if a student has a health issue and is unable to wear a mask, what should they do?
Rachel, I'm gonna kick that one over to you.
So we have an existing policy and process that is managed through our Disability Resource Center that is part of Student Affairs. That process is designed to engage with any student who has a disability or other medical condition such that they're seeking an accommodation academically or, or otherwise. And so a student would need to proactively reach out to the Disability Resource Center. They're located in the Meyer Library, but you can initiate that process online by going through their website to, to work with that staff to see what options may be available. I would emphasize that the process does not guarantee that you will get your requested accommodation. It, it, it simply means that there is a way to determine if in fact you have a condition such that there are reasonable accommodations that do not inappropriately endanger the health or safety of others and that still allow you to engage with the core academic classes and, and do not fundamentally change that academic coursework. So that information is also provided for you on every classroom syllabus. That's information. So if you, if you forget, you can always check your syllabus, which is a good reminder anyway, and it will steer, steer you in the right direction.
Thank you. When it comes to teachers lecturing for, lecturing classes, will they have microphones so that students will be able to understand them when they have their mask on?
Frank, I know you've been involved in that.
In all the large seated classrooms, we will be able to have microphones. As you probably recognize, we have classrooms that vary in size from about 10-person seminars up to 325 in terms of the size of the room. And as you get smaller, we do not have enough microphones for every size classroom. And as a matter of fact, the supply line for ordering them, we tried and we're getting some more, but it is very diminished at this particular point in time. So it's going to be a little bit based on the nature of the faculty member voice projection and what we have available as we get to the smaller classes.
So I, I've practiced talking with, with a mask on and because I'm the loudest man alive, people can hear me easily. Others have more challenge with that. And so Dr. Einhellig and the deans will make sure that all of those faculty members that need a microphone to be heard in the room will have one as we start the semester.
Great. So Gary Stewart, we have some questions for you. On move-in day, how far in advance of our assigned time slot should we arrive for screening parking? How many, oh, it just jumped on me. Okay, how many parents can attend the move-in day and how is it going to look different?
Each resident chose the day and time that they wanted to move in. So that was on them. And we're gonna start that this Sunday, the ninth. We'll open from eight to eight daily over on Lot 39. That is behind Kentwood off of Walnut. There'll be line managers there dividing folks up into three separate lines. And so, you know, they need to arrive at whatever prescribed time they chose. Hopefully, we won't have somebody that is an hour or two early because that lot is only so large. And, you know, we've designated 10 people moving into a building at a time within an hour's time so that we can manage and keep social distancing at its core. Family-wise, the, the answer to that question is we would prefer that only one family member at a time go up into the building with their son or daughter. If mom and dad wants to switch off with that, that's fine. They'll have a sticker that will provide them and everything will be color-coded so that, you know, we can help manage and, and keep people apart. We're gonna ask that only one family be in an elevator at a time so that, you know, at least it is not a mixed bag of people, if you will. We will be paying particular attention to cleaning touchpoints in the elevators, the doors, the entry doors, that kind of thing. And I would also mention that, you know, we need to probably maybe not bring as much stuff as we might normally anticipate. You know, you don't need to bring all of your fall clothes at one time, 40 pairs of shoes, et cetera, et cetera. You know, if you miss a time and, and there's an emergency and something happens, we're certainly not gonna turn someone away that shows up two hours later, whatever. We'll, we'll have to be flexible and, and we want to be accommodating. We've pre-communicated if there are special needs. We need to consider in search of mobility issues, low vision, issues with what students might bring with them. You know, let us know that in advance and we will certainly work around whatever the students' need would be. We're gonna take everybody's temperature. And so, you know, if you, if you have a temperature, we're probably gonna ask you to go sit in the Kentwood lobby for a little while. We'll recheck your temperature. We'll have Major's Health and Wellness will be on standby if we need to do some consulting there. Maybe do a short survey to see, you know, what we should consider about whether you should move into your regular assignment or maybe we isolate you in Kentwood if that would be determined to be the best thing in your interest. Or, you know, there may be some that would want to be tested. We could maybe make arrangements for that. Or folks could come back and then come back at another time. Go return home and then come back to campus at another time. You know, we're only gonna move about 425 to 450 students in a day. So the, the mass amount of people over between Freddie and Blair Shannon and those large crowds are just not gonna be there because we're, we're trying to manage this with what I've explained. And so that will be new to our returners, but will be just what it is for those folks that have never done move-in, if you will, at Missouri State. This is something that is happening at a lot of our sister institutions within our region as well as across the United States. So this may work so well that we'll want to do it again in the future just because it's less stressful and could be a real cost saver because we've always spent a lot of money with one-way streets and off-duty policemen and our safety officers and that kind of thing. So I really think this would make move-in more manageable in many ways.
Great. If both suite mates move in on the same day, how will that work? Are they allowed to help each other move in or will they need to stay in their room while the other moves in?
You know, there's some situations like that that are so far down in the weeds that I'm, I'm not gonna be able to dictate that. We were intentional about, you know, if Cliff and I are roommates, we didn't let Cliff choose a date that I had chose to move in or the same time. And we kind of did that behind the scenes. So that may happen just because of, you know, draw of the straw or whatever. But I really don't anticipate that that'll happen. And the suite mates are gonna have to be together at some point, you know, because that's gonna be their living situation. But we've got a lot of designated private rooms that have been really popular and students have snapped those up and we have some that are kind of on a list waiting to have a private room.
Okay, and just to clarify one more time, as an example, if I have a move-in time at 11:00 a.m., do I get in line for COVID monitoring before then and our time starts at 11:00 for move-in? Or does, if I'm at 11:00 a.m., everything starts at 11:00 a.m. beginning with the testing?
It, it starts at 11:00. It starts at 11:00, show up at 11:00 and the, the whole check-in process will start over on Lot 39. And then you'll have a coated, different colored piece of paper for your dashboard that will say your check-in time, you know, really began at like 11:15 because it's gonna take you that long to get over to Freddie. And then we will monitor that. So if your car is not moved by, you know, 12:15 or 12:30, we will have obtained your cell number and we'll start calling you and/or trying to find you so that you can move it on out because there'll be somebody else coming in behind you that will have been sent from the Kentwood parking lot.
And I think you've mentioned flexibility is, is critical. And so if one family per elevator at a time and you only have an hour and you're waiting on elevators while moving in, will that be taken into account for your time limit?
It depends. You know, there are different numbers of cars in the facilities. They're not all the same. You know, and, and there's only one service car in Freddie. So the majority of folks carry their belongings up the stairwells. You know, and, and I would think if I lived on two in Shannon, it might be to my advantage to just take the stairs. One more reason to, you know, ask folks not to bring a U-Haul load of stuff. You know, and if something were to happen and we had to pivot, we've tried to at least have folks think about, you know, what would you Suzanne, how would you move quickly box your things and move out if, or, or consolidate to another residence hall? And so we need to be mindful of all the personal possessions that, that folks bring. So, you know, probably don't bring your futon. You don't need your 60-inch TV and 40 pairs of shoes and all those things. Let's concentrate on the, the specifics and the necessities that you need. And then you're gonna be going home and you can bring some stuff back with you later.
Okay, thank you. This might be for Dr. Cisco. Why don't we make the PSU and Dining Halls to-go only? They are two of the heaviest-trafficed areas. It seems unwise to eat or not wear a mask in those spots.
Certainly. Thank you, Suzanne. Well, we do have to-go options in all of our dining and retail operations. So a student could very easily go to Chick-fil-A or to stop by Garst and get a meal to go. And they may find, find that they want to take their meal back to their room. They may want to eat outside. Obviously, we would encourage those things. There is seating though in those facilities, but we have moved furniture around in such a way that people can still socially distance from each other and, and eat if it's, you know, raining or cold or they just need to do that in between classes.
Okay, thank you. And still, still for you, Dr. Cisco, I think. How will fraternity and sorority recruiting be done this fall?
Certainly. Great question. Our staff in the Office of Student Engagement have been working most of the summer with our student leaders in the FSL community to address this very issue. And so sorority recruitment, which many of you know is quite an organized process, will be conducted largely virtually, so using online format. And so people who have individual questions about that should go online to the FSL website or contact our folks in the Office of Student Engagement. But those programs will be largely done virtually.
Great, thank you. If the state or the city were to go back, return to shelter-in-place orders, what would that mean for the university and would students be required to return home?
So I, so I don't think that a shelter-in-place order would require students who need to leave in the residence hall to return home because that's where you could shelter in place. That's how we interpreted that order in the spring. The, the other thing I would say is the, we, we have a tremendously good working relationship with the city of Springfield. And, and they take into account the needs of the university and any orders they issue. So for example, the masking order that this ordinance that the city of Springfield passed carved the university out and allowed us to create our own standard for wearing masks. And that's what our Board of Governors is going to do on, on Friday. Now, you know, if we got to a point where the city was saying, you know, no more than 10 people or 25 people should gather in a room, you know, whether we, whether we were required to follow that or not, I think we would want to follow that because that's coming from health guidance based on what, what the, the virus is doing. And so that might very well impact how we do classes. And so a class of, that had 50 people in it at that time would at least temporarily probably move to an alternative delivery method. We would work, you know, a class that had 20 in it, we might cut in half and zoom part of it. And, and, you know, a lab, you might cut in half and have two labs instead of one. So it certainly could impact how we operate in terms of gatherings, but, but it would not require anyone to go home. I would not anticipate that occurring.
Okay, so this is kind of an overall fall events question. Is homecoming, Bear Bash, graduation, Bear Fest Village still happening? Will any of these be modified? What can we plan for?
Haven't made a decision on homecoming yet. Fall sports? Haven't made a decision on homecoming yet. Fall sports, there's no decision yet. That will be coming from the NCAA sometime in the next two weeks. Our conference is meeting on that as well. I had a meeting this morning at 7:00 with the other presidents. There's another meeting tomorrow afternoon. And so, we have input on sports decisions, but it's not completely our decision. If we play football in the fall, and that's still possible, if we play football in the fall, we will not have Bear Fest Village. It seems a really poor idea to all of us to gather 8,000 students and others on our quad, and cram in as many people as we can in that space. It's a lot of fun. I personally love it. Probably not, almost certainly not a good idea. So, we'll be doing Bear Fest Village. We'll not be doing Bear Bash in the traditional way. But there will be other opportunities, other interactions for students to engage in once you're on campus. In terms of October graduation, we're probably three weeks away from deciding what that looks like. Again, you know, the City of Springfield began a masking ordinance three weeks ago, and we have begun to see over the last week a decline in cases, first a stabilization, and then a decline in coronavirus cases from our city. And so, again, we're just going to have to see how this plays out. And we're going to have to factor in, you know, when new testing is available, and do we have access to it. We're going to have to factor in when a vaccine becomes available, and do we have access to it. And so, I think a lot of decision-making, we're intentionally trying to postpone until we have the, you know, the facts at hand before we make all of those specific decisions. Dr. Cisco, do you want to weigh in on any of this?
Yes, thank you. Part of the question had to do with welcome activities. And so, I'd like to just direct students to the Missouri State website. If you type in "welcome," you can see a plethora of events that will be held starting on Sunday when students begin moving in. So, our folks in Residence Life will be holding and hosting events. Campus Recreation will have a number of events. Student Engagement or student organizations, there will be a lot going on. They'll be different. Many events will be smaller, offered numerous times. Many will be outside. They'll be held in a different format, but there will be a lot of opportunity for students to meet other students when they come to campus.
Tara, anything you want to add to the student engagement interaction piece?
Yeah. I think something that you can do is get involved. I know with SGA personally that we are going to offer blended meetings. So, if you want to join virtually, you're more than welcome to it. Or if you do want to meet in person to get more of that interaction, we love to have you. Something that Blake Haynes, who's the Vice President, and I, and Breyer, actually, we all talked, is we are wanting to meet with students in our offices. And we have links in our signatures that you can set up a meeting with us to talk. We want to get to know you. We want to get to help you get involved. There are so many organizations on our campus, and I know they're all working their best to do it to the safest standard for everyone.
Breyer, you want to jump in on that as well?
Yeah, thank you. I would say, I've been talking to Dr. Benson in the OSC, and then kind of just everybody. I would say to all the incoming freshmen, Campus Link is a really good resource, especially right now. You can go through Campus Link and see everything there is to see on all the student organizations on campus. Like Tara said, everybody's kind of doing things a little differently right now, given the situation. And so, I think Campus Link and then social media is going to be your best bet for getting involved on campus.
Right. You should definitely be tracking, connecting on social media with those organizations you're interested in. And so, you know, SGA has all sorts of social media sites. You can also follow Tara. You can follow Breyer. Breyer was involved in the Bear Tones and all sorts of, and choir activities. Those have social media sites as well. The university is engaged in all the social media platforms. And so, again, just encouragement that that's a great way to connect and see what's going on, and give you options there, too.
And Dr. Cisco, can you address how parents can also engage with the family organization?
Wonderful question. Thank you, Suzanne. Yes, we have a Director of Parent and Family Programs, Priscilla Childress, who is very active on social media. She has a website for parents that she posts information. She does a regular newsletter with information. She has an Ask Priscilla button on her website, so you can type in a question. But she works very hard to communicate what's happening, what are the upcoming events, what do parents need to know. And if she doesn't address your specific question, she'd love to talk to you individually.
There's also a Facebook page for parents of Missouri State as well, that you can connect to and talk to each other, see, you know, get, see what other parents are doing and thinking and planning as the semester starts.
Okay, good. Thank you. How has the university handled positive cases already confirmed on campus among students?
David, you want to take that one?
Sure. So, we've primarily so far, we've had a couple of different groups. As we've had, for example, those that are in athletics, as they've been arriving on campus, or Residence Hall staff, as they're arriving on campus. They each get tested. And then, if someone turns up positive, we reach out to them in order to find out what their current situation is. So, do they have a roommate? Are they living by themselves, things such as that? Do they need housing to move into? So, then, we coordinate if they need to move into, we're currently using Kentwood as a place for isolation. So, we reach out and connect them with Residence Life. They coordinate that move over into there. And then, from that is, for example, if it's athletes and their coaches are following up with them in order to make sure they're getting the things that they need. If it's other, if they're not affiliated with athletics, then we're following up with our contact tracing team in order to find out what is going on, if they're seeing any changes, so that that way, we can make sure that if they need assistance, such as through majors, or to schedule additional testing, then we can do that. And so, that's been the process we've been using so far. One of the things I might add to that is, so if they're in quarantine or isolation, obviously, the whole point is, we don't want them leaving their room. It's very important that we don't potentially allow that infection to spread. So, we deliver, Res Life will deliver the meals to them. And so, they've got a process where they go through to find out what it is that they want to order, and then, they deliver those meals. They'll knock on the door, so that they don't have contact, and then the student can get that. But Gary may be able to speak that even better, because they've been, him and his staff have been interfacing directly with them. But that's the general process that we're using.
Okay. So, there are more questions on testing. And so, David, and perhaps Dr. Maggie, these would be addressed by you. Why is it that students must be referred by a physician to have a COVID-19 test done on campus? Why is testing not more available to students? And why is Missouri State not testing more students more often, other than athletes and students traveling internationally? And is there a charge to be tested at majors?
So, David Hall, why don't you start generally on that, and then we'll ask Dr. Maggie to jump in as well?
Yeah, yeah, good. So, first of all, is we're testing much broader than just athletes and international, those that have traveled internationally. We've been, again, testing Residence Life. We've been starting to test band and choir members, as they've been doing a random sampling on that. We've got theater and dance, as they're starting to move in. And then, we're going to be following up with the Residence Hall students as they move in, starting on Sunday. We'll be doing random sampling testing of them as they start moving in. And there's, you know, I think 350 that will get tested as part of that. Again, it's to be able to identify, do we see individuals coming onto campus? So, we've, and again, and after that, we'll be conducting is across the entire spectrum of the campus, there will be random sampling that will be done on a weekly basis throughout the semester. I will say is, we have not experienced any shortage of testing capacity. We've got set up with multiple labs, and I'll let Dr. Maggie speak with those that he deals with on the symptomatic basis. But, you know, we've been, you know, people, if they've been needing testing, we've not had that issue of getting tests and get them conducted. So, I can let Dr. Maggie speak more about the, those that are symptomatic and going for healthcare, and the questions related to payments.
Thank you, Director Hall. Cost is not a barrier to COVID testing at Major's Health Center. We do try to bill insurance if a person carries insurance. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act from the spring mandated that insurance companies cover reasonable costs of testing for COVID in full, without copayment, without deductible. And so, of course, on your behalf, we ask the insurance companies to comply with federal law. Should, however, you not have insurance, or should you have a gap-type insurance that's not protocol compliant, or should for whatever reason your insurance company foot-dragged and not remit the full amount, then the university is on record, is indicating that they'll allow us to go to them for the remainder of the cost. So, the net effect for you as a student is that you can come and get a necessary COVID test after seeing a doctor here at Major's, and it will be fully paid, if not by insurance, then by the university. So, that's a great relief, and you seek the testing you need for both diagnosis and reassurance. As Director Hall said, we've had no shortages. We've not closed a single day that we were scheduled to be open since the COVID pandemic hit. We remain active in the center of campus as a resource for not only students, but faculty, staff, employees, dependents, retirees. We've found quite a few active cases of COVID, and been able to work with Director Hall's team and the public health team, so that they get the quarantine or isolation that they need, and don't become a focus of community spread. Also, the flipside is, not everything that coughs or sneezes or whatever is COVID. So, sometimes, we're able to help people discern if not COVID, then what is it, and what can I do to get feeling better and back to my classes. So, we're happy to be here as a resource for you. We're happy that the university's making COVID not a cost barrier for anybody, and we're happy to give people private accurate healthcare here, so that they can return to classes and enjoy their semester.
Suzanne, I might add on to that is, regarding the question about the physician's order, is, a physician's order is required in order to be able to provide the testing. So, now, what we do have is, so for example, all the random testing and everything we're doing is, we've got the standing orders that allows us, so, you know, as they come in, then, you know, we've already got that pre-approved to be able to provide the testing and send it in. But because it is a medical procedure that is required, that they have to have a doctor sign off on that as an order. So, that's the reason for that. And these are asymptomatic. So, these are, you know, just anyone. It doesn't mean that they have to be showing symptoms or think that they're sick on the ones that we're doing the testing for.
Okay, thank you. And David, I think this one might also be addressed by you. We'll see. And I don't think you covered this specifically. So, as a student desk worker who has just recently worked at Kentwood Desk, the quarantine dorm, and noticed that the students there did not follow the rules, hanging out with each other, ordering food, leaving the building, what is going to be done to actually keep them in their rooms? And as a desk worker, what am I allowed to do if someone tries to leave?
Yeah. That's an issue certainly we're working through. You know, that's a challenge, certainly with the students, the age that they're at, is very social individuals, and it's time for socialization. And whenever, you know, we're putting them in quarantine or isolation, then, you know, that's difficult. So, we're really encouraging them to connect in other ways, either through social media, or through, you know, video conference, through all of those other areas. And we're working through that of how do we better enforce that. What we've got to really make sure that we're doing is educating the students about how important it is, because if we want to get through the semester, we all have to do our part. And so, that may mean is, you know, that we have to sacrifice for two weeks, and move to, you know, move to another location, and stay by ourselves, or stay, you know, within that, so that we're not taking a risk of spreading that disease to others. And that's certainly a challenge that we're working through, and how we can better make sure. And I think particularly with what we've experienced so far, again, we've kind of got some experience under our belt, as we've had, you know, a few move-in to that, is the challenge that we will have with that, I think we have to do a better job making sure we're educating our students of why this is so important, and we're all part of the community, and we're protecting each other.
And will there be a distinction of who is housed or quarantined at Kentwood? Those will all be students who have tested positive. What if via contact tracing, a student has not tested positive, but they've been exposed? Will they also be in Kentwood, or will they be housed elsewhere?
So, we are, we will have set up by the first day of school, alternate sites. And so, our goal, and we think we can hit our goal, is to house people that are waiting test results, and people that were, that do not have a test result in one space. And then, if the test result becomes positive, move those people to another space where only positive people live. That's the goal. And so, we're going to have, we're in the final stages of contracting with some local folks for additional space. We should have that set up by tomorrow. And so, we will not be housing people with a positive test result with those who do not.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Dr. Einhellig, this is more for you. Will the GRE be waived for grad school admission due to COVID-19?
The GRE and GMAT and other tests for most of our graduate programs have been waived for admission for the fall semester. No decision has been made for next year for, you know, 2021. And there are still, I think, two programs that did not choose to waive that. So, it's not quite a blanket waiver.
Thank you. This will be Dr. Cisco, I think. One parent has not seen the campus. We move in Tuesday. Are we allowed to show that parent around the campus on Monday masked and outside?
Absolutely. The campus is open, and we would love for people to come and walk around the campus to become familiar with it, certainly.
Buildings will be open. Go inside buildings as well?
So, the campus will be available for those who are interested in attending Missouri State next year, and so they can come for on-campus tours and the usual process?
Yes, the Welcome Center is open. And if you go online, you can reserve an opportunity for a tour, if you want someone to tour you around campus. We always encourage that. We even have some great Missouri State face masks we can hand out to you there as well. So, if you want an official tour, we can handle that through the Welcome Center. Or if you want to just visit on your own, you can do that as well.
Great. And you actually touched on something that we had a question. Will students be given masks, when they, branded masks, when they arrive on campus?
Yes. Gary and his staff have purchased a number of masks. They'll hand out when the students move in the residence halls. We also have them available at the Welcome Center. We handed them out at a number of events on campus. So, yes. They also have other branded masks in the bookstore. If you want something different or additional mask, you can purchase them there.
Great, thank you. Dr. Smith, can you expand more on the diversity efforts in action? There was a brief mention by you, but still hoping to have a few more details on what exactly it will entail.
So, there have been a group of individuals who have put together, and let me touch specifically on the student leadership diversity training that we are putting together for students. We feel it's important for students to go through a training, especially our student leaders. And so, there have been a number of individuals in student affairs, in diversity and inclusion. There have been faculty members who have worked to put this diversity training together. And it will be a train-the-trainer. We understand that our students love to work with Our, we understand that our students love to work with one another. And so it will be a train the trainer where students will learn about implicit bias. They will learn about the history. They will learn about cultural competence. And so that will happen over the span of fall semester. We will do that each semester as we go through. So there will be a group of students selected for the fall to go through that training. And then from there, there will be another group of students who will go through that training in the spring. And we will continue that throughout each semester. So there are a host of workshops, talks, readings with faculty and staff from across campus who will be involved in that particular training. It's, it's difficult to just give you all the particulars. So you're more than welcome to send me an email and I can give you additional information about that. You can stop by campus and sit and talk. And if you're interested in participating in that particular training, we would love to have you as a student, undergrad and grad, new students and returning students to be part of that particular training.
So every, every Tuesday, I put out what we call a Cliff Note that goes to campus. It's in Inside Missouri State. It's also goes out on, on the Missouri State and my personal Twitter on Tuesdays at nine. I think in two weeks, the note will focus on our action plan for diversity for the year. Lots of details there that, that you can see what we're working on. One of the things we're working on, we have a bias response team so that when there is a, you know, if there's an incident on campus that somebody's, you know, drawing a swastika on a whiteboard, that, that how do we manage through that? And how do we, how do we work to improve and make that less likely to occur again? Ms. Dockery and Dr. Smith have been working on, on the policy behind that to really strengthen that effort so that we're prepared to respond when, when hateful things occur. And unfortunately, they occur all the time, all across the country and all different kinds of places. We don't want them to occur here and if they do, we want to be able to respond to that. And so, so, so that's an example. We're also, we'll be redesigning and expanding our multicultural center in the student union over the course of this year. So lots of things going on all across the Diversity and Inclusion Group. But there'll be a real detailing of that within the first couple of weeks of school in the Cliff Note that I sent out.
Great, thank you.
Suzanne, if, if I may, this is-
Yes, of course.
If I could just say, we have a number of people across campus who are interested in assisting students becoming culturally competent, which, which of course is one of our pillars, as well as our faculty and staff. We have awesome people in our multicultural programs area, in our access area, in our Bears League area. And so in all of those areas, those faculty and staff are going to be putting initiatives in place to help work with students who want to be much more culturally competent and culturally conscious as they become new bears and returning bears on our campus. It's not directly my job, but it's all of our jobs to work towards being culturally competent and conscious as we grow who we are on our campus and where we live and what we do. So that, that will happen, but we have a lot of things going on. We have a lot of initiatives and we welcome students, faculty and staff getting involved.
Great, thank you, Dr. Smith. What, and I'm not really sure who this falls under, but you can duel over it. What can we do if we won't reach service hours for scholarships due to COVID-19 restrictions?
Dr. Smith, is that yours?
I think it's a combination of myself and Dr. Cisco. But we, we know that there are going to be alternative situations that we have to put in place to address service hours. Because of course, we know there will be some places that students can't go to in the community. And so you should work with your individual scholarship on campus and work through that particular process. But we are putting alternatives in place for those activities.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dockery, is Missouri State finalizing the implementation of the new Title IX policy that comes with a narrower, narrower idea of sexual harassment? Did I lose her?
You're muted there, Rachel.
Yeah, so, so there's really two parts to that question. Missouri State, like all universities and colleges across the country, is required by federal law to revise their Title IX policies consistent with new federal regulations that were passed by the Department of Education in mid-May and go into effect on August 14th. And so tomorrow at our August board meeting, our board will be asked to approve revisions to that policy, again, which are mandated by federal law. This question specifically asks and notes that the department has decided to narrow the definition of sexual harassment as it applies to Title IX. I, I can tell you that many of us disagree with that decision, but we are required to follow it. That being said, it is clear that these Title IX regulations establish minimums for Title IX. We are not, however, precluded from continuing to manage other incidents that previously would have constituted sexual harassment under other policies. Like, for example, our Student Code of Rights and Responsibilities, like our complaint procedures process by which we investigate and evaluate other complaints of discrimination. So our plan and, and our revisions anticipate that while certain conduct may not be addressed squarely within the Title IX policy, it will still be addressed just the way it would have been for the last six years. It will still be addressed by the university and we will continue to enforce our policies and support individuals who have been victims of sexual assault and provide them resources and support.
Hey, thank you. What is the best webpage to go to to learn about prepping for freshman year at Missouri State? Not COVID stuff, but general stuff?
Dee, what do you think? We'll let Tara and Briar weigh in on this as well if they've got opinions.
Well, I think there are a variety of websites that have great information for students. The, the Student Success website offers a lot of resources and they also have a, is hotline the right word? They have a, an information line where you can, if you have a specific question, you can get an answer to. I would also direct people to the Student Affairs websites because, you know, we know that learning doesn't just happen in the classroom. It also happens outside the classroom through a variety of different opportunities that students have. And the Student Affairs website has all of that information. So those would be the two I would recommend.
Briar, what do you think?
Um, I would say the one thing that will always stay true about Missouri State is that we are all here as a community and we all want to help. And so really, if you have any questions as an incoming freshman or a transfer student or an international student or anything, just reach out to your student leaders or your professors or the administration or Student Affairs. Really, anybody that you reach out to is going to do nothing but just offer you advice and try to help you through this process if you have any questions.
Tara, do you have a favorite website?
I don't know website wise. Echoing off of Briar, I would say the RAs are also an amazing tool to ask. They're right there for you. But honestly, Campus Link, it's a way to get involved. And even if you are just on something virtually, you can make connections and have like Zoom coffee houses or whatever that might look like, just to kind of get to know other students and upperclassmen.
Yeah. You know, I, I think, you know, if you go to the, if you go to the homepage, there are, there's a category that you can hit on called Current Students that has three boxes right at the top, Discover What's Happening, Calendar of Events. And, and I would just say play around on the website. I mean, we've done, I think we've worked really hard, you know, to have webpages for almost everything that you could be interested in. We have, you know, you can search within the website. And so Suzanne, any thoughts? You're, you run the website, your department, anything you would scroll in there?
And I think Dr. Cisco might have mentioned it, you know, certainly the Res Life page covers so many things you need to know before you're moving in. It really answers all those questions about what you're going to need in your room, what you're not going to need in your room. I, I think our Return to Campus page that just came out isn't just COVID. It's how to, you know, things that you'll need to take care of as you come on campus. And, and I think too, if you go to the SGA site, would they, I think they could find information there on how to get involved and, you know, get, get, see folks that they could reach out to. But certainly it does, it does, it is helpful to, if, if you know what you're looking for, if you're interested in fraternity or sorority life, you know, there's a page for that that you can search for either FSL or fraternity-sorority. So a lot of the things that you might be interested in, if you just Google them on our website, I think you'll find a lot of information on the various, various pages that are out there. Okay, I think it looks like we might need some clarification and this could be a Gary Stewart question. Is there going to be a charge, if I test positive or if I have, if I have been contact traced and, and have to move and be tested because I've had exposure? Am I going to be charged extra to live? You know, if I'm tested positive, will I be charged extra to live in, in Kentwood where, you know, positive testing resident students are being moved to? Or if, if I move to a hotel because I, as a, as a residential student, will I be charged extra for those?
Yeah, I'll take that. The answer is no. If you are living in a residence hall with us, we are not going to charge you extra if you have to move to a different place, period.
If I am living off-campus and would like to take advantage, number one, would I be able to take advantage of the housing that the university is offering to residential students who test positive?
Unknown at this time, and it may depend upon availability of rooms. And so I think we would work, work with people on that to help if we could. But again, there, there's going to be a limited availability of rooms and the direct focus is on those students who are living with us in the residence halls or the apartments.
Okay, thank you. And David Hall, you might have answered this, but will there be cheating, seating charts in seated classes for contact tracing? And how am I supposed to know who I'm in contact with if I don't know anyone's name?
Well, the way the process works is many of our classes, they will have seating charts. So once they show up, they'll find out where everybody is sitting and then ask if they continue to sit there in the same seat throughout the semester. And what would happen is if we're notified by the Health Department or through our testing that someone has tested positive, then we would request that seating chart through the department ahead from the professor in order for us to be able to look at that. By the way, we can maintain the confidentiality for all of the students within that. And then we can look and see and identify those that would need to be put in quarantine. So it really depends on multiple factors. It's not just simply of gee, I'm sitting there. Part of it is, is how far, how long, you know, when, when was the person symptomatic? Were that they, they are potentially contagious to others? So there's a variety of factors go into that and that's provided by the Health Department and gives us guidance in making those decisions in order to know which students need to be contacted. And other times that request will come from the Health Department because they'll know about it. First, they reach out to us if we've got someone on campus that has been tested positive and they will, as part of their contact tracing, then they'll reach out to us in order to be able to have that information.
Thank you. So most classes, science classes and others that have a lab course have not transitioned or is, they're not offering an online option. What is going to be done to ensure the health of the students when they are participating in these labs in close environment?
Frank, you want to take that?
Some of the things that have already been mentioned, it does start with masking. In those science classes, that's certainly possible. I won't even try to get into music classes because then we got another series of things. We're trying to not only recognize the masking needs, but recognize not having those labs as full as we often would have them, keeping as much distance as possible in having those classes. In some cases, they're going to stagger the meeting times to every other week so that we can in fact do that. And that's going to depend on, you know, the nature of the class, on how much that is done. So there is no question that they move around in some of those classes and that becomes less of a fixed location. And so there is some greater chances of contact. But we're doing, some of the things I mentioned to you will be certainly in place.
You know, one of the things we've learned as a country, and a part of it was as a result of an unintentional experiment in Springfield. And that is, we had two ladies that cut hair, one of the salons in town, were unbeknownst to them, had the virus. They thought they had a cold or something else and they continued to go to work. They cut the hair of 140 people over the course of a week while they were infected. But because they wore a mask, none of their customers contracted the disease. And so again, you know, in a situation where everyone is masked and moving around and not in direct contact for 15 minutes within six feet in a class, it can work. But it's critical that people wear the mask the entire time they're there, that, that you space apart, hence the limitation on numbers in classes, that, that the lab is then cleaned when people depart. And so all those things are in place to help us run our labs, which in many cases are very challenging to move online. And if we do move online, it's often a lesser experience. That we need to get those in for your education if we can.
Okay, thank you. I think we clarified earlier that if a student tests positive or has to go into quarantine, et cetera, they are responsible for reaching out to their faculty member to inform them and to get their information. Will there be a universal attendance policy regarding COVID-19? Previously, it was left up to professors just to decide what was and what was, what was and was not an acceptable excuse.
Frank, you want to talk about attendance?
We are strongly working with all the faculty to have flexibility and I'm mandating that they cannot utilize the same kind of attendance policies that they've always traditionally done, which may be more stringent than we would have under the environment where people can be absent and would be absent if they test positive or if they are feeling some symptoms. We will not be penalizing them as long as, of course, it's not so elongated that the work can't be done. So we will have that flexibility and everybody will abide by that.
Yeah, you know, I have for my whole life come into work if I have a cold. I almost never stay home if, if I've had symptoms. I am changing that practice this year. If I have symptoms, I'm not coming to work. And we're going to ask our students, you know, hey, if you have a cough that you didn't have yesterday, don't go to class. And so again, we, we will not punish you for following the directive that we give you not to come to class if you have a cough, if you have a fever, if you lose a sense of taste or smell. Rather, we're going to get you tested and we're going to find out what, what you have in a, in an expeditious manner. And if it's the flu, if it's a cold, well then, you know, you, you recover and you go back. If it's, if it's, if it's the corona- recover and you go back. If it's the coronavirus, then we'll work to get you isolated until your symptoms are gone.
Great, thank you. Gary, you're up. Please define visitor as it pertains to the restriction of no visitors in dorm rooms. Can students from other dorms on campus visit in another student's room in a different dorm? Is it possible that the no visitors rule will be reevaluated later in the year?
We hope so. As time goes by, and, you know, we can determine that we're going to all be healthy. But initially, as we open, we will require any visitor to not be up in another student's room or hallway, and to maintain any kind of socialization down on the first floor, or, you know, each building is different, but at Sun Villa, that would be on the mezzanine. And, or while the weather's nice, go outside and hang out on the mounds in front of Hammond's House, or in the courtyards at Freddie, or Wells, or wherever. And this will be something new to the returner students, for sure, but it'll be the way we're going to start out with the new students that move in.
So specifically, if I live in Freddie, and I have a friend in Blair Shannon, I am not going to be able to go to Blair Shannon to visit my friend in their room?
Correct.
Okay. And how will that be enforced?
Believe it or not, staff know who lives in their building. And then I could always ask to see your ID. And each resident's ID has a building sticker designation on it. And so, you know, if you live in Hammond's, your designation is HA. If you live in Blair Shannon, it's either B or S. And, you know, we would ask folks, you know, to not go upstairs. And in some instances, the elevators are card-accessed. And so if you walked into Blair Shannon, and you tried to go up on the elevator, your card is not going to call the car downstairs. So you would need to call your friend, or text your friend, and have them come down, and you guys go hang out on the patio or the veranda or somewhere.
Okay, thank you. And you're still up, Gary. How are community-style bathrooms going to safely operate in the residence halls? For suite-style dorms, if a suite mate refuses to clean, sanitize, what recourse will the other suite mates have?
You know, again, that'll depend on the occupants. One of the first things that the RAs are tasked to do is to encourage roommates and suite mates to work out some kind of agreement. We have some forums that are conversation starters about that, and some examples of ways they can pitch in and take a shared responsibility for the things that have to be done with the trash removal, you know, who furnishes toilet paper when, how often the toilet gets cleaned, or the shower, or vacuuming, or damp mopping, those kinds of things. And, you know, that's a big lesson, a life lesson in and of itself, because most of these young folks have never done that. Somebody has done it for them. And so we have to really start off the semester with encouraging them to think about, you can't just move in here and not have some kind of cleaning responsibility, because the place is not going to look very nice quickly. And then that may culminate in a suite meeting or a roommate mediation meeting, where we have to go to another area, sit down, and, you know, lay some ground rules about what our goal is. And then you've got to have communication, and you've got to have commitment to that. And, you know, we are used to doing that, because that is not anything that's going to be new just because of this pandemic. So we're prepared for that. With regard to the common bathrooms, they'll be cleaned more often. And, you know, we've talked to all of our incoming student staff and that kind of thing, that some of the standards may have to change in terms of hallway carpets may not be vacuumed as often, because we need to go in and clean the common area bathroom two to three times versus just once a day. We'll probably shower foam our showers more often, and we may rely on second or third shift to do some of those for us as well, so that one of those cleanings can be done from midnight to 8:00 in the morning.
All right. And so that will be our last question?
Oh, one more that I think could be really critical.
Okay, last question, here it comes.
Okay. Well, there, oh, no. Are we going to be notified prior to the first day of classes on the structure for the hybrid courses? So some of the courses have transitioned from all-seated to hybrid. Will they be notified about each class in advance as to whether it will be seated on Monday and Zoom on Thursday? How will that be communicated, and when can they expect to see that?
Frank?
Well, that process is still going on.
Yeah.
And will probably continue, because it's not something we forced on faculty. We're taking it one course at a time so that we can work the room arrangements. And so I think we're going to be right down to the wire, and probably not everyone will be informed prior to going to the first class, but they should go to the first classes as scheduled, unless they've heard otherwise.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to our panel for spending two hours with our students today. Thanks for our students and family members for being on here. For those of you that are incoming freshmen that express the desire to think about online classes only, tomorrow is the day where you should check the website and follow up on that opportunity. You know, as a traditional freshman, you may have literally hundreds and hundreds of choices for classes that are seated. Just know that that same number of options is not going to be available if you teach online. There may be 30 sections or 40 sections that potentially you could take. Probably would mean you would take math second semester, not first semester online. So again, be flexible as we try to be flexible and create this alternative for you. And so again, thanks for a great virtual town hall, and we'll end with, as always, Go Bears!